Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sitting in my chair.
Got a special treat, little cocker spaniel. Two-year-old female, she was a stray. Very cute. Cocker spaniels make great pets, I know, because I had one growing up as a kid. One of the things that we're going to be talking about or voting on today is spay and neuter program. So when you adopt a dog from our dog kennel, we're going to be giving you a $50 voucher to go to a veterinarian of your choice to have your dog spayed or neutered. So that should help with our pet population. So come on down, pick her up, take her home. Well, welcome to our March 2nd Lorraine County Commissioners' Meeting. Our thought for the day: A friend is a person with a sneaky knack of saying good things about you behind your back. And are we going to do the proclamation first? Should I do it here? We have a proclamation today for the American Red Cross, and I'm not sure who's here to accept that.
Mary Moran is supposed to be...
Okay. If you want to just step up to the podium?
Clarence, you don't look like Mary Moran.
Let me just...I'm a little hoarse today, so hopefully I can get through this. It's kind of long. Whereas the Lorraine County Chapter of the American Red Cross celebrates 90 years of service to the county of Lorraine in this year of 2006, and whereas the Red Cross is always there under the same trusted symbol, serving our community and touching more lives in new ways by providing lifesaving information, training, and disaster relief to individuals and families for the past 90 years, and whereas the Red Cross is a leading voluntary agency meeting the needs of individuals and families affected by personal emergencies and disasters, and whereas the Red Cross is designated by the Congress of the United States in the Act approved January 5th, 1905, as amended 36 U.S.C. Sections 1 through 9, as a lead voluntary agency responsible for national and international relief in time of peace, and to apply the same to the suffering caused by pestilence, famine, fire, floods, and other great national calamities, and to devise and carry on measures of preventing the same. And whereas the Lorraine County Chapter of the American Red Cross has trained over 250 people in our community in essential skills such as first aid, CPR, and disaster preparedness information, saving untold number of lives, and whereas March has been designated as Red Cross Month by the Presidential Proclamation to celebrate the achievement of the Red Cross in the services it provides to the communities nationwide. Now, therefore, we do recognize the Lorraine County Chapter of the American Red Cross is the lead voluntary agencies to help families prepare for disaster and meet the immediate needs of individuals affected by disaster, and a leading voluntary agency, training families in first aid and CPR, and providing other needed services. Further, we urge that our community acknowledge and support the ongoing contribution of the Red Cross in helping our families prevent, prepare for, and respond to emergencies and disasters during Red Cross Month and throughout the year. In testimony wherefore, we have hereon to sign our names officially the second day of March 2006 and cause the seal of the Lorraine County to be affixed. Lori Kukowski, Ted Kallo, and Betty Blair.
Thank you very much. It takes a lot of people to make the Red Cross work in the county, and we have that lot of people. We have over 400 volunteers, very dedicated to providing the services. About 10% of the population are touched by Red Cross. The support of everybody in the community just makes it work, and we're glad everybody's working together. Thank you very much.
If you will permit me, Elizabeth Rumix, Oberlin, Ohio. I would like to compliment four several New Orleans evacuees, the work of the Red Cross back in September. I had two people staying with me for a time, and FEMA was, as they are now saying down in New Orleans, federal employees absent and so forth. But we went up to the Red Cross first off, as being advised to do that, since one could not get through to FEMA, and the people there were immediately helpful, gave all sorts of information, took down all kinds of their personal information so as to enable them to start getting on lists and be identified and so forth. What made it particularly interesting to me was that one of these two people had not had a terribly good opinion of Red Cross from down in Louisiana, and was extremely impressed by the people up here and how they helped out, and I think that should be acknowledged.
Thank you.
Your first-hand testimony, Clarence.
And add on to that, the Red Cross last week, nice job over at Manor. My wife's 87-year-old grandmother was part of that. You guys did a very nice job with that. Thank you. Along with Tom Kelly, not leaving out the county government, but Red Cross did a nice job moving those people out.
Who's next on the agenda?
The decision on the 226.13 acres of renovation from Carlisle Township to the city of Alariah.
Jim, do you want to update us on the JED meetings that we've been having?
If you please to do so, thank you, Commissioner. We had our last discussion just late yesterday afternoon, and I believe that we're having very productive discussions, and we're going to reach an outcome eventually. Unfortunately, we have not been able to achieve that result prior to having to make the decision today. I'm very pleased to report, I think, both sides have sincerely come to the table and tried to work through some difficult issues that they found to be significant barriers before, and we're closing the gap, but we're closing the gap very slowly. There's been some give and take on both sides. There's some strong positions on this issue, and some of them are very old issues between the city of Alariah and Carlisle Township, but people have given up their time and they've put a tremendous amount of effort into this, and I think that they deserve our praise for continuing to stay in there. And I had a long talk yesterday with both sides about the need not to let what the decision has made today ruin the good work that's been done at the table, and hopefully we can continue to strive for that needed JED so that intergovernmental cooperation can continue between Carlisle Township and the city of Alariah, and they have all agreed to try to do that. Right now, we do not have anything to offer to the board that would indicate to you that you shouldn't do anything otherwise than act on this petition for annexation. The petitioner has been very patient. They've given us countless extensions. While the progress has been made, we have not been able to meet the needs to be able to tell them that they're going to be able to do anything other than finish this annexation. But a lot of good work's been done by both those political subdivisions. If you have any questions, I can offer more.
Are we having a public hearing? Should we have the...there's no hearing at all?
Decision time.
This is it.
This way the rubber meets the road, Commissioner.
Okay. Any of the commissioners have anything that they'd like to say?
Yeah, I'd like to, again, praise both sides. Carlisle Township, city of Alariah, they worked very hard at this. Wish they could have come together for the JED agreement. I mean, it's a difficult decision when you start changing lines of jurisdiction and services, but again, hopefully we can work forward on this in the future. Based on other comments, I would move that we grant the annexation. The developers spent a very long time on this. I've gone back historically, and I've read more paper than I'd ever like to read again based on what's been going on, so I would make the motion to approve the annexation.
After you, Commissioner Blair.
Gee, thanks, Ted. I want to thank our county administrator and our assistant prosecutor, Jerry Innis, and all those involved in this process early on. Those who are familiar with Carlisle Township know that I went to the trustees and asked them to look into the formation of a JED, because as a township, a Carlisle Township resident, I do not like to see any of our territories lost to the city of Alariah. However, the developer has made a legitimate request, as he is entitled to do via the Ohio Revised Code, and it's our job to act on that request. I trust that you will continue to work towards a JED so that Carlisle will not face any more such annexation requests in the future. I received many, many heartrending letters from people I've known all my life, and it's not easy for me to vote on this, but I will. But I'm not seconding the motion.
Okay. I was wondering if you were seconding the motion. I've known Mr. Albert for 20 years, and I know he's not going to like this, but because of the two properties, the way they are, and you can't pick and choose, you know, to delete a portion of the properties to be annexed, Mr. Shave's property, the way it hangs on a shoestring to Mr. Albert's property, I don't...I'm not in favor of the annexation because of that. If it was just Mr. Albert's property, I would be in favor of it, but it's too large, and the way it's configured, I have to deny the annexation, and I would make that motion.
Well, Jerry...
Wait, wait, wait. Madam Clark, you have a...
Steal me.
You have a motion on the floor.
Correct.
You might want to either die or get seconded. Correct.
With no second, the motion has died. We have another motion on the floor to deny the annexation.
Mr. Innis, can we approve a part of the annexation request?
No.
No, Commissioner.
It's all or nothing, Commissioner.
You can see that we did not discuss this before the meeting.
It's tough.
Can we delay the decision? Well, we are effectively delaying the decision if we don't have a decision, but can we...
No, not legally, Commissioner.
Again, very difficult decision, and Commissioner Blair being a resident there also, so I mean, as I said, it's been very tough, it's been a very long time, there's been arguments both sides, for and against, and again, we have a lot of people involved. It's not just making a decision based on dollars and cents, so again, I can't second your motion, Commissioner Kukowski.
We have a stalemate.
I was going to say, there's a motion on the floor for denial. If there's no second, that one will die.
What are you shaking your head no for, Jerry?
Can we get a legal rendering on that, or our administrator?
Well, go ahead, Mr. Innis.
We dumfounded him, I think.
We've never had this happen before.
No, I had this happen in a township where two commissioners had a conflict of interest, and we couldn't get any motion seconded because nobody could do it. I'm sorry.
He's thinking of Rico, is Elizabeth.
Again, I just will repeat that the commissioners have a mandatory obligation to act upon these, and certainly, if nothing happens, we will be subject to an action in mandamus.
What Mr. Innis, I think, is saying, and I can make it simpler, is that they'll go to court and compel you to make a decision.
Well, we can always...I can always make the second on this and vote otherwise, can't I, Jerry? So we get along with this? Or do we just let it sit hanging? I don't want to leave the developer or the residents up in the air. It's been lasting for a year.
Your question is, if you make a second on a motion, are you obligated to approve that motion?
I'm not.
No, you're not.
Correct.
You can vote no.
Well, still, if Mr. Kallo would second Ms. Kukowski's motion and vote no...
It's still stuck in your...
It's still sitting in front of you, Commissioner.
Because it hasn't gone anyplace. If I were to vote no as well, then it's not denied. Then it's not approved either.
Correct, but a decision has been rendered.
Really?
Once a motion is voted, once a motion is made and it's seconded and the roll is called, a decision will come out of that. You cannot come out of it unless you abstain, okay?
Well, I've thought about that, too.
Okay. I'm just letting you know, that's the only way you can have a vote not be a positive vote after a motion's made and seconded.
Well, no, but my question is, if Lori voted to deny it...
Correct.
And Ted seconded her motion but voted in the negative...
Right.
And I voted in the negative as well...
Then that would deny the annexation.
Okay, then if I voted in the positive...
That would approve the annexation. Oh, I see what you're saying.
It's a different motion. You already killed the granting one.
And it's not denied, but it's also not approved.
That's a bit more of a sticky wicket.
Well, I'm asking, if I don't second it, Commissioner Blair doesn't second it, we're going to end up in court regardless on this, Mr. Innis? Based on a granting or denial?
If we don't approve or deny it, I think we're going to end up in court.
Is that what we're thinking, Mr. Innis?
But Jerry, the question is, if we do deny it, that's not approving it.
But you know what, Commissioner? I can leave you at your question.
Okay.
Let's make it simple here. Obviously, Commissioner Kukowski is against the annexation, Commissioner Kallo is for the annexation. If the roll's called and Commissioner Kukowski says no, Mr. Kallo says yes, and you say no or yes, right?
Or she abstains.
Or abstains.
If she abstains, nothing happens.
There's going to be...and if...so one way or another, and then if you're going to end up with a decision, because at the moment, you've taken a different position, then Mr. Kallo will call for a second, another motion, unless you change your vote in the second motion, it's going to pass.
Like government at work, guys, are we doing this the right way today?
Depends on which side you're sitting.
Yeah.
When you have three, when you have three people, unless one's abstaining, you can always reach a decision, whether it's favorable or not.
Do I have a second?
No.
Nope.
Okay, we need to move on with our regular agenda.
It dies.
Either way. Under resolutions, number one, job and family services bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kukowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Investments.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Kukowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Transfers.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Kukowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Advances, I believe there was one.
So moved.
Second, and I need some discussion on that. Just like to everybody refer who has the agenda, if you go to Board Correspondence Three, the commissioners have been receiving some letters thanking us for what we've been doing with our dog kennel the past year, bringing it up to speed. I'd like to thank Jack Solimpa wherever he went to, our new warden, and along with that, they'd like us to consider initiating a spay and neuter program. While myself, my assistant, the other commissioners have been working on this for about a year, I'd like to thank Rick Lalanne, United Friends for Animal Justice. They've been an integral part of this, and we finally got agreement. Mr. Cordez has showed me sort of how we do these things. We're doing a $25,000 advance to our dog kennel fund to offer a spay and neuter program to anyone who adopts a dog to help limit the pet population, as Commissioner Kukowski explained. We've got some mockups of what the voucher will look like. It'll give $50 to anybody to have a dog spayed and neutered that they're adopting from us. And I'd just like to say thank you to Rick, and if you have any comments, Rick, because you've been part of this for a long time.
My name is Rick Lalanne from United for Animal Justice. We've had the pleasure of being able to work with the county and assist them for the last year with some of their efforts to improve the county kennel. The commissioners considered various improvements here for the county kennel, and I'm really happy that you guys stepped up to the plate and hit a very important run for the dogs. This, I'm sure you won't be, you know, you won't regret this decision. I know it's a very good decision. It's a very good decision for the owners. It's going to make the dogs focus on people, not focus on mating. It's just going to make them much better pets. It's going to be good for the community. It's going to make them much less likely to roam. It'll make them much less aggressive and much less likely to bite people and spread diseases. It's going to be good for the dogs because they're going to be healthier and, you know, less likely to get cancer and other stuff like that, and so, you know, we just plan to, you know, promote this to the county, too, you know, if it's okay with you guys. In fact, I was actually on W O B L talking about spay and neutering just a few days ago, and so, you know, we're hoping to do that and hoping to work with you guys at the parades and the county fair again, assist you in whatever way we can. This is really important, you know, in a time when, like, sometimes, you know, county could be having, you know, some difficulties economically. It's not really the greatest times. It's good to see you guys step up for some of, like, the poorest so-called citizens at the county and help them out, and I'd also like to thank, you know, county administrator James Cordez for doing the legwork on this, and I'd like to thank the dog-worn Jack Solimpa for, I know he contacted the vets and did a lot of legwork on that, and say, we're just extremely pleased with this, you know. We're very passionate about helping the dogs. We feel that, we feel that the dogs are God's creatures, and we just really love what you're doing with them. We like how you bring the dogs up to the commissioners' meeting, still doing that a year later, and just want to give you our sincere thanks, and I also want to thank specifically Toni Shanahan. She's been great, and she's been helping out, and she just has such a big heart for the dogs. It's just, it's really nice to deal with her, so thanks again.
Thank you for your help, Rick, and we'll be sending out letters to the veterinarians in the county, show them how they can participate in this voucher program, so thank you.
Ms. Kukowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Requisitions.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Kukowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Bills.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Kukowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Under commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictions of Lorraine County Commissioners?
Commissioners, I have a number of hiring issues discussed out at Job and Family Services, so I will probably need a moderately lengthy executive session so that we can go through those personnel actions.
I have to leave by four.
I said moderate, Commissioner.
Well, I just thought I'd make the parameters.
So I would respectfully request an executive session at the conclusion of our regular board meeting today to discuss those issues and the ongoing negotiations with one of our labor groups.
Does a lot of this have to do with the DAS pushing responsibilities down on us, that we have to spend so much time on job and family services hirings?
Well, that's always going to be a problem, and I appreciate you relooking at that, but this is just filling some vacant positions for the moment, but that's always an issue with DAS and their lack of funding, and the state continues to put unfunded mandates through, limiting the amount of services that they used to provide to us without funding those services. And I will be addressing this board very soon on the TEL Amendment, commonly known as Tabor, that's still being bounced around the state pretty heavily, and it's probably some form of it's going to get on the November ballot, and we're going to have to take a position on that. To give you an update, I will be speaking with all the library trustees. They've asked me to come out and speak on the TEL Amendment and Tabor to their association later this month at the college, and I will be bringing...
Do you have a date yet?
Yes, I have it in my book.
Would you let us know, because I think Rebecca would probably like to attend that meeting, because the Alliance has also been asked to do something with that, so we'd probably like to hear what you've got to say.
That's great.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Elizabeth.
You know, Commissioner, I've spent a great deal of time in the last few weeks bringing myself up to a level where I feel comfortable speaking and understanding the issues more deeply than just surface, and I will be addressing this board and providing you information because we need a grassroots leadership role in this to take a position. It's, after I give you the information, I'll tell you how I think about it. I won't do that right now, but we need to get involved in this, and then we need to look at bringing some of our contiguous counties in northeast Ohio in a concerted effort to position ourselves with regard to this initiative.
And hopefully put a resolution against the TEL initiative.
Well, once again, I was going to tell you my position on the commission, but you're allowed to have that.
Okay, we'll do that on a later date.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Instruct clerk to advertise for bids for Lorraine County Transportation Center, removal remediation of the asbestos. Publish notice in the Chronicle-Telegram on February 27th and March 6th. Mandatory pre-bid meeting at 2:00 p.m. on March 14th at 40 East Avenue, and bids to be opened at 2:00 p.m. on March 24th in public hearing room.
So moved.
I'll second. This is the not to exceed $60,000, and this is our first step at upgrading the train transportation center.
This is the long-awaited, first, hammers and nails, you know, some kind of work, this real work at the train station. Commissioner, thank you for bringing that up. It's been long in coming, and the lessons we learned on these funding streams have been massive. I want to thank Karen Davis for hanging in there. This was new to us, using these type of funds, and every time we thought we were right there, we got pushed back. This time, I know we're right there, so she's hung in there, and she's had to learn a whole new skill set to be able to deal with the requirements of these funding streams, and I think we all should be very appreciative of her continued to push these issues ahead for us. Hopefully now, we'll be moving at a much more rapid pace. I'm hoping that within the next 18 months to two years, we're going to see a real project there, and we're going to be cutting a ribbon soon.
So moved.
Okay, Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Thank you.
Approve change order number one to suburban process piping ink for million and ton amount of $3,636.34 for the fourth-floor alterations project. Furnish all labor and materials to install additional owner requested water line in training room 423 for $568. Furnish all material and labor to make changes in existence sanitary and vent lines from the fifth floor. Toilet rooms not included. $2,181.34. And furnish all labor and materials to alter the base bid HVAC in the waiting area 458 and reception 460 for installing the glazing system above the countertop. Glating system divides the area into two rooms with separate VAV units. $887.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kukowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Approve change order three to Schreimer Construction North Homestead, the amount of $15,786 for the fourth-floor alterations project. Furnish all material and labor to install aluminum framing and glass enclosure with two sliding locking windows and a handicap pass through by the reception waiting area 458 and 460 countertop. $5,951. And furnish all material and labor to install a custom wood meeting room 424 desk located on the base bid raised platform. First sketches prepared by architect and requested by owner. $9,835.
So moved.
I'll second.
Mr. Cordez, I asked you, but for the public, I said $9,000 for a table. Are you kidding me? But can you explain what this table is involved with?
The reason I hastily grabbed the mic is because I misinformed you.
You did.
I did. The, I quickly answered your question, and I should have paid attention more. This is the, this is the raised platform that we're building in the new...
The Diaz?
Right.
Oh, okay.
Okay. You know, after... You know, after I talked to you, I didn't really like my answer, and I was moving around some issues, and I'm thinking, that, that don't sound right to me. So, this, this is, this is because we're putting a new Diaz in, and a new bench, so to speak, over in the new part of that, and we wasn't included in the base bid because we were still designing that and working on that issue. So, that's, that's what that is.
Okay.
And, and I had talked to you, all the commissioners, some time ago about design issues with that. So, and as it's written here, you know, it says, you know, desk, so forth. I just want to give the wrong impression that it's just a desk. So, that, that's why the cost is a bit substantial.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Right.
Convene a 911 planning committee in accordance with Ohio Revise Code 493145 and 493142A, which shall serve without compensation itself, consisting of three voting members. One, the president or other presiding officer to the Board of County Commissioners as the chairman. Two, CEO of the most populous muni corporation in the county. And three, from the most populous of the following, either the CEO of the second most populous muni corporation in the county, or a member of the Board of Township Trustees in the most populous township in the county as selected by the majority voted Board of Trustees. In counties with a population of 175,000 or more, the planning committee shall consist of two additional voting members as follows. Member of a Board of Township Trustees selected by majority of boards of township trustees in the county pursuant to resolutions they adopt, and the CEO of the muni corp in the county selected by the majority legislative authorities of the municipal corporations in county pursuant to the resolutions they adopt. The 911 planning committee is conveyed to provide for wireless enhanced 911 under Ohio Revise Code 493145A and shall amend the final plan in accordance with Ohio Revise Code
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
And I'd like to thank Jim, because I got on Mr. Cordez about a month ago on Delaware and Lincoln County in the state of Ohio, one of the first ones on board, and I told Jim I hate being third. He said it was already in the works, so we hope to have the wireless 911.
It, it was in the works, and I appreciate your patience, Commissioner. I, I told you that I was waiting to see if somebody else stuck their foot out there, what would happen first, and you said, "Next time, stick your foot out." So, we're, we're like number three, and I'm sure there's a lot of activity around the state. The funding stream has been set up by the state, so we'll be able to access approximately a half a million dollars towards this goal. Tomorrow, or late this afternoon, we'll be sending letters out to the municipal association here in the county and the Township Trustees Association, asking that they appoint a member to fill those two vacant roles. The board needs to meet within, the committee needs to meet first within the next 30 days, so we should see some pretty good movement. This plan will not, will, the reason I specified in the resolution, it's only to deal with enhanced wireless services, because we don't want to have to go through a long and laborious process of trying to get a final plan approved, which is quite, quite an undertaking. This will be an amendment to the final plan, and it takes simple votes on the amendment. So, that's why we're moving this way. Robin Jones has done a really good job of keeping the issue out there. Her and I have been in constant communication for about the last eight or nine months on this. So, they have been very aware and have been moving the issue very good, and I'm very pleased with the performance coming out of 911 with regard to this. And they do have a, a whole proposal and everything ready to go to the committee, so it's not like it's going to start at zero. They all weigh in front of the issue.
Ms. Kowski.
Hi.
Ms. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Hi.
Community Development Department award contract to backs roofing and construction Plymouth in the amount of $4,840 for Joseph Thomas Eene Township to receive assistance from CDBGFY04 Emergency Home Repair Activity Account to receive a grant for a complete roof tear-off and replacement with gutters. Three quotes were received, this being the most responsive complying with specifications, and this amount includes a 10% contingency on any unforeseen change orders.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Under Golden Acres, approve and enter into contract with Visiting Nurse Association of Cleveland Hospice and Palliative Care Partners of Ohio to provide services to Lorraine County Golden Acres Nursing Home effective March 2nd, 2006 through March 1st, 2007, with a 60-day written cancellation clause.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Under the Engineer, amend Resolution 06110 adopted February 16th, instructing clerk to advertise for bids for the furnishing of highway materials. Send amendments to reflect the change in the advertisement dates for February 27th and March 6th, and open bid at 2:30 on March 13th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Authorize the creation of the ditch rotary fund based upon Ohio Revise Code Section 6137.06. This fund is for the purchase of equipment, materials, and labor related to the general maintenance of water courses.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Under the Prosecutor, authorize the continuance of a grant with the Office of Criminal Justice for the victim witness program administered through the Lorraine County Prosecutor's Office. This grant is effective retroactive to January 1st, 2006 through December 31st, 2006, which will receive $42,018, the salary and benefits of one full-time employee and a portion of the second employee with no cash match.
So moved.
Second. And this is funded from where? I'm sorry.
The grant.
The grant.
At grant, okay.
No cash match.
Thank you.
I'd like that.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Soil and Water, instruct clerk to advertise for the following bids in the morning journal on March 3rd and 10th. Shorter ditch improvement project, Carlisle, New Rush Township, bid open at 2:30 on March 24th. And Lindsay ditch, face-two ditch repairs, Wellington Township, bid open at 3:00 p.m. on March 24th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Cordez, County Administrator.
One amplification of an issue that came up earlier. I wanted to thank Dennis Sharver and our maintenance crew. We also dispatched our buses and our drivers to assist with that problem at the high-rise so that we could transport the residents back and forth between the shelter and, and the high-rise. So, we used our, our folks and our buses here rather than calling off our transit buses off the road. The commissioners may not be aware, but that in the event of, of this type of catastrophe and, and larger ones, we would halt transit operations, and we would bring our buses in and transport that way. Doesn't do anybody, doesn't make anybody happy just waiting for a bus out there, but obviously, in an emergency, you need that transportation. So, rather than not transporting schoolchildren, of course, those buses can be pressed in the service first, we would press our transit buses in the service first. But I felt it more prudent, given the limited scope of what we needed, to send out our transit drivers with their CDLs and our buses from here to assist, and that was enough to be able to provide that. So, I just wanted to let you know that we had done that. I think you were aware of it, but they did a really good job, and Mr. Sharver responded in a, in a very prompt manner. In fact, he was going way too fast to get over there. So, that's all I have to report this morning. Thank you.
Minister Enos, Assistant County Prosecutor.
I have several matters of pending litigation I need to discuss with the commissioners.
One more after today, Jerry?
Probably.
Commissioners' report.
I'd like to commend Robin Jones and Tracy Slagel from our 911. They received Ohio Gold Star Award, and really horseshit, but I'm going to read this letter. It is with great pleasure that I offer Lorraine County 911, congratulations on being selected as winner of the Ohio 2005 Double Gold Award. Your team was selected for this award based on the submission of names and your description of the team's outstanding performance July 17th, 2005, when the team went above and beyond expectations during severe flooding in Lorraine County. You and the members of the nominating team, Donna Chopczynski, Melody Leisure, and Kurt Scholl, are invited to attend the Gold, Ohio Gold Star Awards luncheon on Tuesday, April 11th, 2006, in Columbus. So, I'd like, would you guys like to come up and say something about the award?
Oh, Robin, Robin loves to talk.
Come on, Tracy.
It was a very tragic situation that day, but I'd just like to say, everybody that was involved did a tremendous job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Robin.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Tracy.
You know, Commissioners, I can't begin to tell you how important the job is down at 911 and how well those people do it down there. As you can tell from Robin and Tracy, it's like the silent service down there.
Yeah.
They don't have much to say, but they do a darn important job, and they do it well, and they don't ask for very much, and they, they just, every day, they're there, and they're, and they're ready to perform, and they do, they do a great, great service for the residents of Lorraine County. I'm very, very proud of the whole organization.
They sure do. Now, my grandson, who you summoned the ambulance for, et cetera, when he was about three, he's now an eighth grader. He's playing basketball. He's a handsome dude. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay, I'll go next.
Well, you're allowed.
I thought you wanted to start, Commissioner, and you were doing your thing.
I'm always talking.
I know that.
Yeah, you're supposed to be nice to your fellow Commissioners.
It's been a very busy week, besides dealing with YMCA concerns and the annexation concerns, and I'd like to apologize to the township and to Mr. Shea and Mr. Albert and the attorneys that we couldn't come up with a decision on this. Again, very heart-wrenching issues. I guess I'll put it back in my file. And with the YMCA, so everybody's clear. Jim Cordez and I met with the bank from Texas approximately two weeks ago. Have no clue how this got out. It wasn't talked about. It was just some discussions. They've never gotten back with us. I think it's a very needed project in Lorraine County, as long as the numbers work out properly, and we think they can, but still, we haven't heard anything back from the bank yet if they even want to sell them to us. So, there's really nothing out there as of yet, so. End of my report, Commissioner.
But I think it's very important, and there's discussion. And also, I'd just like to piggyback by saying that there's public interest in the discussion that's going on. I had input last night at a fundraiser, and then I had a telephone call from a former councilwoman positively speaking towards this issue. So, I'm sure you've heard it, but I just want to say, in case you hadn't, there's positive public support for this concept.
I've heard it both ways, Commissioner, positive and negative.
I've only had one person negatively speak to me on the issue. The positives far outweigh the negatives. I want to thank you, Commissioner Kayla, for the punchkis that I ate.
You're welcome.
I'm not going to tell you how many. And I also want to tell you that, as you were at the punchki ball sponsored by Kudowsky's Bakery and W O B L and Jeff Eitzon, courtesy of Jeff, I got in, because when I got to the door, I didn't have a ticket, and they were sold out, and I wanted to go listen to the nice music, and they found a ticket. The poor guy who had the ticket ended up at the hospital. I'm sorry, but I was glad to take his place. I also spoke to leadership Lorraine County here yesterday at the request of Captain Drazowski's from the Sheriff's Department, and it was an interesting class. And Sheriff, I think you're doing your homework, but I'm telling you, well, you just keep working on those alternate plans for that jail addition, that's all I've got to say. And tonight, I am going to stop at the U E W cap council and say a few words to them, and then I'm going to graph to Amity View Kiwanis. And Rebecca, I want you to come on down and say a few words about Lorraine County Community Alliance.
Um, just to remind everybody, oh, is she coming down to talk?
Yeah, she's coming down.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. She finally arrived.
I thought it was kind of like a one of those, you know, you need to come down, period, let's go.
I thought she was coming down to Kiwanis.
Yeah, I mean-
Well, she can if she wants to, but I think she's coming here to say hello to us.
Thank you, Commissioners. Just briefly, I wanted to let you know that the annual Lorraine County Transportation Day is coming up, the first Friday in April. The Ohio Department of Transportation, District 3, has been a very active partner with us on that project, and we hope to include the Lorraine County Engineers' Office this year as well as NAWACA. We did that comprehensive approach from the local, federal, and state last year, and it was a, a great success. We had a great day. So, that's something that we can all look forward to.
Great, except it's April 7th, the same day as-
April 7th.
-opening day for the Cleveland Indians. Okay.
And you're buying tickets for us all to go afterwards. That's correct.
Thanks, Rebecca. That's my report.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm done. Amen.
The board is going to meet Tuesday, March 7th at 9:30, rather than Thursday next week, for correspondence.
Did you hear that, Elizabeth? Next Tuesday?
Thank you. We hope we bring that.
Okay. I moved. Second.
Get it all out.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Public comment.
Commissioner, I would just indicate that a person indicated they wanted to make a public comment about one of the issues that I need to discuss with you in executive session. I asked them if they would withhold that until I did have an opportunity to speak with you, but I assured him that he would have an opportunity if he, if he chose to spoke later after the executive session.
Morning, Commissioners. David Ashenhurst Overland. I just wanted to ask if we could get a contract amount and a little bigger description on number 15, the contract with Visiting Nurse Association of Cleveland Hospice and Palliative Care Partners of Ohio. And just, what's the amount, and what's a little bit more on the nature of the services that are going to be provided? Thank you.
You certainly can.
You certainly can. I could answer that question right now. It's on a fee-for-service basis.
It's there, excuse me, just a fee-for-service basis, and what is the nature of the services? I mean, is it running the golden acres, or is it...
No, 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 no. We're required, as a fully skilled nursing home, to provide various services to the residents. So, we have contracts with different providers, OTs, PTs, hospice, so forth, and on an ad needed basis, those services are rendered to the residents at the home. So, it's not a fully funded contract, it's on an ad-needed basis to fulfill the requirements for skilled care at the nursing home.
Part of my reason for asking was because it was the Cleveland, it was a Cleveland organization, and I knew we had New Life Hospice, or we used to have it out here, and I just wondered about who is providing the service and how this came about. That was really the nature of the question.
There was proposals sought, like there always are, and then there was an analysis made on both a service delivery and cost basis, and the only thing I can say any deeper than that is that it was felt that this was in the best interest of the home. Much more than that, I would have to have Jerry Dole speak to, but I do know it's not a fully funded contract. We have contracts with many, many service providers for skilled services out there.
Understood, thank you.
Shirley R. Johnson Overland, we have all been reading in the newspapers about the possible county takeover of the Y Buildings and Swimming Pool Program, and if the county should create a recreation department, develop a recreation program. Of course, such a possibility is a policy and financial decision, and should be discussed in public before, not after, such a deal is made. Discussing purchase of property can be done in executive session, but this overall subject deserves public discussion, which it has not had to date. Besides being a policy matter, it is a wider money matter, where the money will come from, and more specifically, the broader framework of finances, what other needs will or may not get less or more, or be affected, et cetera. I can't read my own handwriting. The public needs to hear more discussion, points of view, pros and cons, before the possibility becomes a probability, not alone a done deal.
For the last two months, I've been meeting with Direct Action of Central Lorraine, and been working on the youth committee, and I just wanted to announce the Youth Spring Talent Show that's going to take place at Admiral King, April the 8th, on Saturday, and I just wanted to make that announcement. I have some flyers for you guys if you'd like.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Danny.
Anyone else?
Yep.
I'm Howard Washington, I'm the owner of Minority Electric Company out of Lorraine. This is one of the issues that, sure, Mr. Ennis, I'm sorry, he's going to speak to you about the awarding of a contract on the fifth-floor renovation project, which we actually bid the project, we were second bidder. On our bid documents, it indicated that we are a Lorraine County contractor, which is a way that Minority Electric interpreted the bid documents. So, what my stance on this is, is that we filled out the bid documents properly, we interpreted them as we seen it in the proper manner, and we were like $700 higher than the number-one bidder who was, who listed on their bid document, Cuyahoga County address. Whether that be right or wrong is not for me to determine, but it's for you all to determine. But I just wanted to speak my stance on that, as far as us being from the county. I see you have a picture there of the Lorraine County Justice Center. The reason this whole thing hits home with me is because you had a similar requirement in that bid, which we formed an alliance with an out-of-town contractor when that building was being built, and in excess of $2 million went into electrical installation in that job, and we were a successful little bidder, me and the out-of-town contractor. So, I kind of felt that I kind of went to bat for an out-of-town contractor, which gave us, our company from the county, an opportunity to participate in that project. I submitted letters to the Commissioners on that, stating our case on that prior to the award of that contract, because there was talk about they weren't going to award it to him because of him being out of the county, but I made all the Commissioners aware of the fact that they were teamed up with a contractor from this county, being ourselves. When he was awarded the contract, I could stand here and say that we weren't, we didn't participate in one hour of installation on that project, which I felt we kind of got hoodwinked on the job, and I contacted the county on that, and I was told by Karen Davis, well, there's nothing that we can do with that. Now, business is, competition in business is the good thing about it, you know, when you win, and it's the acceptable thing about it when you lose. So, my stance with this Lorraine County, you know, principal office, or Lorraine County business type thing, I just want the county to make a determination on what's the real intent of that program. If the intent of that program is to fulfill, you know, a requirement or a goal, if you will, of Lorraine County home office, corporate businesses that stay here, that build here, so on and so forth, you know, you didn't enact that approach on the Justice Center. On this contract here, the low-bidder contractor indicates that he does have an operating business in this county, and I'm not standing here to dispute that, because I'm kind of caught in the middle. We have a good working relationship with the low bidder, but my stance is, I just want to make sure that either you're going, you know, where are you going with this program? Does a home office have to be in the county? Do you just have to have an operating business in this county? I want them to take a stance on it, and whichever way they go with it, I'm fine with it, as long as they respond to me that they use that same approach on the Justice Center. I like to have that in writing. As I stand here, we also have a business, a business address in Cuyahoga County. I purchased a Cuyahoga County business that was in business for 35 years, electrical contracting business, for that purpose, because the city, because Cuyahoga County has a similar requirement that you cannot bid work if you don't have an operating business within that county. So, we purchased a business, I own it free and clear, to abide by their rule. When I bid a job in Lorraine County, I use my Lorraine County corporate address, because that's what I felt the bid documents asked for. When I bid a job in Cuyahoga County under their program, I have to use my Cuyahoga County address, otherwise we won't get awarded the bid. So, whatever stance you take, I'd like, you number one, someone submitted to me in writing, and also use your interpretation of it on the outcome of the Justice Center. Thank you.
Commissioners, just for clarification purposes with regard to the Justice Center, there were some contractors that, local contractors, that were contacted by some of the larger out-of-county contractors and promised work, and they did not receive that work, but rest assured that the local content requirements of all the bids documents were made and were We verified that content. There was movement by the larger vendors in and out of different local providers, and some people were promised, again, I'll state this, some people were promised work that they did not receive, but the content was there, all the goals were achieved, all the initiatives were met with regard to that. We don't have any problem with Minority Electric, and we understood that they were one of the effective vendors that were promised some things and weren't given to by the big vendors, but overall, the program achieved the requirements that it was set out to achieve. We spent millions and millions of dollars here locally through the local participation project. That's a little bit different than what we're doing here and what we're going to speak to. This is a local participation program that gives a slight edge to a local business. The Justice Center mandated a portion of various elements of the construction to have a large portion of content, sometimes up to 100 percent, but it ranged anywhere, most of it ranged from 15 to 25 to 30 percent. Of the contracts had to engage local companies as partners to get the work done. So, there was two distinctly different programs going on there, and I just don't want to leave anything lingering out there that we didn't meet those goals. And as far as Ms. Davis saying there was nothing we could do, a couple of companies contacted us and said, we were promised work, and we didn't get that work, can you help us? We referred it to council, and they came back and said, as long as they meet their goals that they stated of 20 percent content, who they do it with, whether they had some kind of verbal understanding is still up to them, and there was little we could do. So, we did not just ignore the issue, we did try to intervene on behalf of local companies. With that, Mr. Ennis is going to speak to you on this issue, but I also know that there's somebody else here that wants to speak on the other side of the issue, and...
We were going to wait, but as much as the one side has spoken, Ken, if you want to speak now, go ahead.
I'm Ken Stumphauser. For those of you that don't know me, I think I know everyone here, I represent Lake Erie Electric. Appreciate Mr. Washington's comments. Lake Erie Electric was, in fact, the lowest bidder on the project for the electrical work on the fifth-floor renovation, of which I've heard most of during this meeting. I just wanted to touch, actually, on a number of issues that were raised by Mr. Washington, and I really believe that there was a disservice done to the Commissioners in that the form that is used on the local preference issue is somewhat misleading, in that the local preference legislation that you have indicates that you must have a significant economic and physical presence in Lorraine County, and that's exactly the issue here. Lake Erie Electric was founded in Lorraine County in 1952. It has been paying income taxes, I'm talking corporate income taxes, to the city of Lorraine since 1952. It currently employs, 58 employees in Lorraine County, eight office staff, including engineers, six of which live in Lorraine County. It employs 50 electricians, 39 of whom live in Lorraine County. It holds title to 18 vehicles in Lorraine County, all of which are registered in Lorraine County, were purchased generally in Lorraine County, sales tax paid to Lorraine County. Last year, Lake Erie Electric purchased $950,000 worth of supplies from Superior Electric, electrical supply store here in Lorraine County. All of the employees of Lake Erie Electric, which has a business address in Lorraine, pay income tax to the city of Lorraine. It owns real estate, it was purchased in 2000. There was a building constructed by a local contractor, that building cost $250,000, again in Lorraine, Ohio. It pays real estate taxes every year. The real issue here is your form, again, is somewhat misleading, because it was identified on the bid that the Lake Erie Electric presence is located on Industrial Parkway in Lorraine, Ohio. It has corporate offices in Westlake, but it also has offices throughout the state of Ohio. But in this particular situation, this is its own operating entity, it has a significant economic and physical presence in Lorraine County. I would suggest to you, it might be one of your largest electrical contracting firms in the county. So, at the time you reviewed this information, and maybe the recommendation was made to you, simply because your form is not expansive enough, I don't think you had the benefit of the information I just shared with you. I'd like you to consider that, please. Thank you.
For the record, Commissioners, we have done considerable work with both companies. We find them both to be very responsible companies. So, when we go back and we talk about it, because we have a potential issue with litigation on this, they're both very fine organizations. Each one of them have done substantial work for us in the past. The one thing I do want to address, though, was a gentleman from Minority Electric mentioned that he had an address in Cleveland, and when he applied there, he used that address, when he applied here, he used this address. That's the very thing we're trying to get away from. That's the very thing that we don't want to happen. The reason we developed criteria that may be a little difficult to meet is, we want a substantial presence here, we don't want a storefront business with an address. We have tried to battle that over a number of years to make sure that if we're giving a preference, we're giving a real preference to real companies that are committed to our community here in Lorraine County, and to employment of Lorraine County, hopefully Lorraine County residents, and to making of substantial contributions to the community. And we try very, very diligently to make sure that that occurs, and that we don't end up with just a mailing address. I'm sure that he has a presence, substantive presence in Cleveland, I'm not trying to allude to anything else, but we do try to watch out for that potentiality.
Thank you. Well, I don't see any more takers, so I'm going to move that we go into executive session.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
I'm the vice president of the issue, she can wait.
Commissioners have reconvened from executive session.
We're going to reconsider the bid that was awarded to Minority Electric for the fifth-floor renovation.
We need a motion on that.
We need, okay, I make a motion that we reconsider that bid.
Second.
Discussion.
Jerry? Oh, yes, aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye, because they're making too much noise.
Incidentally, that's Resolution 06-127.
Okay. And would you like to explain the circumstances behind this?
Yes, Commissioners. Last week, we had determined that Minority...
Electric.
Electric, Minority Electric was the low bidder. That happened because they were given the advantage of being determined to be a local contractor. We received an objection on behalf of the second lowest, well, it was actually the lowest bidder, but it was Lake Erie Electric who we initially determined to not be entitled to that local preference. The reason we did that is, on the information form, there's a point where they list a Westlake address. I was under the impression that that was the only address that they had placed on the form, and I advised the counties that, you know, we are bound by what they put in the form, we're not going to go outside the document. If they put Cuyahoga County as their place of business, then that's what we're bound at. Upon actually seeing the document, we have discovered that they have actually listed two addresses, one in Lorraine and one in Westlake. The top of the document says, you must tell us where your principal place of business is. We then have a place where you can put your address, and then we have a place where you can put principal office, and I think what Mr. Stumphauser is saying is, that's confusing, we didn't know where you want us to put principal place of business. The principal office is our corporate offices, the address was meant to be the principal place of business designation. He has indicated to me, as you heard in the presentation, that the Lake Erie does have significant contacts here in Lorraine County. It's my understanding that they file income taxes and pay income taxes in the city of Lorraine. Finally, Mr. Washington got up and pretty much said that his business does exactly the same thing. So, it would be my recommendation to you that we need to treat both of them the same, and if we're going to determine that Mr. Washington's business is entitled to the preference, then we must also determine that Lake Erie is entitled to that preference.
But Jerry, based on the bid, there actually is no need for a local preference in this, correct?
Correct.
At this point, Lake Erie is the low bid.
Right. At this point, we could either, I'm just saying, they both should be treated the same, whichever way we decide to do it, and either way, Lake Erie is the lowest bidder, but I do want to indicate, we're basing a lot of that on what Mr. Washington just got up and told us.
Commissioners, they're both very fine companies. As I indicated earlier, we've done substantial business with both. You know, based upon what Mr. Ennis said, I would recommend that you reconsider an award to the now apparent bidder. Lake Erie Electric has the lowest and most responsive bid.
Do we need to rescind the previous?
What we should do is amend Motion 06-127 to rescind the award of the bid to Minority Electric and award that bid to Lake Erie Electric.
So, moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Commissioners, I'd like to ask to go back into executive session. We came out early so that we could deal with this issue, because folks were waiting for the decision, but we still have issues to be discussed as detailed earlier by my comments for the same reasons. Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Commissioners, I would, just one other thing, I did ask both Mr. Stumphauser and Mr. Washington to stay, because I did indicate to them we would discuss this and probably be making a decision, so I just wanted on the record that, you know, we didn't wait for Mr. Washington to leave and do this, I asked him to stay.
Are we going to send him a letter advising him as to what happened? Is that amended a motion? Okay.
Commissioners have reconvened from executive session.
After discussion with our legal, Jerry Ennis, came to my attention that my motion was not complete, so I'd like to renew my motion, based on I did not ask for the findings that are required by law, and I'd like to, again, make the motion to grant the annexation based on those findings, and if Mr. Ennis can help me out and read those aloud, please.
Thank you, Commissioner. The motion contains a whole series of wherashes which describe the sequence of events that have occurred prior to this day and brought this to this day. It also contains the formal legal descriptions of the properties. I'm not going to read all of that, although it will be part of the final resolution. I'm going to read the formal resolution part that includes the findings. That reads, "Now therefore, be it resolved by the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners of Lorraine County, Ohio, that one, the board makes the following findings upon the evidence and testimony presented, the complete transcript containing the verbatim testimony is kept at the office of the Clerk of Board of Commissioners. The necessary requirements are in the record for notification and have been complied with. The petitioners are owners of the territory of property to be proposed to be annexed. There has been no dispute of the validity of the petitioner's signatures, and those signatures constitute a majority of the territory proposed to be annexed on the date of the petition. A, the petition meets all the requirements set forth in and was filed in the man it provided in Section 709.02 of the Revised Code, in that one, the real estate is contiguous to the municipal corporation to which the annexation is proposed. Two, the petition contains, A, the name of the owners, their signatures and date each signature was obtained; B, a legal description of the perimeter of the proposed territory to be annexed; C, a map or plat of the proposed territory to be annexed; D, the name and address of the agent for the petitioner; E, lists of all the parcels and the name and mailing address of the owners of each parcel; and, one, within the proposed territory to be annexed; two, that lie adjacent or directly across the street from the proposed territory to be annexed; three, that a majority of the territory proposed for annexation lies within the county. B, the persons who signed the petitions are owners of real estate located in the territory proposed to be annexed in that petition, and as of the time the petition was filed with the Board of County Commissioners, the number of valid signatures on the petition constitute a majority of the owners of real estate in that territory. In order to be valid signatures, one, signatures are of owners of the property; two, were obtained more than 180 days before the date the petition was filed.
Excuse me, Jerry, we're not obtained.
I'm sorry, were not obtained more than 180 days before the date the petition was filed; three, constitute a majority of the owners of the territory proposed for annexation. C, the city of Valeria, to which the territory is proposed to be annexed, has complied with Division D of Section 709.03 of the Revised Code, the requirement to adopt by ordinance or resolution a statement indicating what services will be provided upon annexation and the approximate date the services will be provided. The statement that services will be provided upon, quote, upon annexation, unquote, complies with the statutory requirement of stating the approximate date for providing services. D, no street or highway will be divided or segmented by the boundary line between Carlisle Township and the city of Valeria as to create a road maintenance problem, or if a street or highway be so divided or segmented, the city of Valeria has agreed as a condition of the annexation that it will assume the maintenance of that street or highway. For the purposes of Division, street or highway has the same meaning as in Section 4511.01 of the Revised Code. Item two, the board further finds the territory to be annexed is not unreasonably large. Item two, the board further finds the territory to be annexed is not unreasonably large. Said finding is made upon consideration of the following: (one) the geographic character, shape and size of the territory to be annexed in relation to the territory which will be annexed, to which it will be annexed, and in relation to the territory remaining after the annexation is completed; (two) the ability of the annexing city to provide the necessary municipal services to the added territory; and (three) the effect on the remaining township/territory of annexation is permitted. The evidence presented demonstrates the annexation of 226.13 acres has not been found to be unreasonably large in numerous court decisions. Although the configuration of the territory is somewhat irregular, the entire area has developed in a similar pattern. This annexation will not be inconsistent with that pattern or present new burdens upon the city or township. The city of Elyria will be able to provide utility, safety and emergency services to the territory. The response time will not be significantly different from services currently provided within the township. The removal of the territory from the township will not cause the tax base of the township to be so eroded or depleted so as not to permit the township to continue on and provide goods and services to the township residents. In the immediate future, the township will be gaining considerable tax revenue. Item three, the board further finds that on balance, the general good of the territory proposed to be annexed will be served. Benefits to the territory proposed to be annexed in the surrounding area will outweigh the detriments to the territory proposed to be annexed in the surrounding area if the annexation is granted. As used here, surrounding area means the territory within the unincorporated area of any township located one-half mile or less from any of the territory proposed to be annexed. Said finding was supported by the evidence that (a) the good of the territory will be served and the benefits to the territory. The annexation will provide sewers to the area. Other alternative sewer systems are not likely to occur for years, if at all. Petitioners have already waited several years for alternative sewer access to become available. Sewer access will enable petitioners, the Polish Club, to build pavilion, clubhouse and recreational facilities which cannot be presently done through septic or mound systems. The other petitioners plan to build residential developments which in addition to sewer accessibility will be enhanced in the city due to increased density. Emergency fire and police service will be provided by full-time units. (b) Benefits to the surrounding area. Increased development opportunities will increase the tax base of the properties and make additional revenue available to both the city and the township. The immediate and long-term increase in commercial use of the area will result in jobs and economic opportunities needed in an area with a depressed economy. The increase in families and development provide needed growth to the area. (c) Detriments to the surrounding area. The extension of the irregular shape of the area creates some potential for disruption and confusion of services. The increased development and commercial activity reduces the rural nature of the area. After several years, the township could lose some of its tax base. Cooperation between the city, county and township officials should keep problems with provision of services to a minimum and temporary. After a short adjustment period, cooperative efforts should allow for a smooth transition in services. Commercial and residential growth appear to be a natural expansion in the areas accessed by this annexation. Some growth is healthy for all of the affected entities. The township will receive a short-term but substantial increase in tax revenue. The township will have sufficient time to plan and use this increased revenue to alleviate the long-term impact. Be it further resolved, that (one) based upon the findings of fact that all the conditions of annexation as contained in revised code 709.033 have been met, the petition for annexation as presented is granted. (two) The clerk be directed to enter this resolution upon the Journal of the Board and send a certified copy to Attorney James N. Taylor, agent for petitioners, clerk of the city and clerk of the township of Carlisle. (three) The clerk of no appeals filed within 30 days of journalization of this resolution be directed to deliver a certified copy of the entire record to the clerk of the city of Elyria.
My motion standard, I need to make a new one, Jerry.
That's your motion incorporating that.
Well, based on, law requires us to make a decision one way or the other. I asked one of my Commissioners for a second one more time.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Yes, I'd like to make a statement. I'm not sure what I want to say. I'm not happy about making this motion. But I will make it based on the fact that I believe the developer has certain rights and those, thank you, he cannot obtain those rights within the township at this point.
That sort of roll call, please.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
No.
Commissioners, I request that we move back into executive session. We still have a number of issues that we need to deal with as detailed in my prior request.
Thank you very much for coming back, and it was a very difficult decision. It's something we have to do by law, it's what we're elected to do. So thank you very much. Theresa Colfer, go back into exec, you have to help.
I don't have a motion yet.
I did, come on. Make a motion to go back into executive session.
Okay.
Second.
Kowski.
Aye.
Kayla.
Aye.
Blair.
Aye.
Okay.
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorain County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Welcome to Golden Acres, Lorain County's best-kept secret. In the heart of Lorain County, we are nestled on 22 acres of rolling hills in Amherst Township. Our rural-like setting is centrally located for everyone's convenience.
Since 1997, when the Golden Acres tax levy was voluntarily abandoned, the home has been self-sufficient. We currently serve private pay and Medicaid residents, are in the process of becoming a Medicare skilled nursing facility, which will enable us to provide a wider range of service to the residents of Lorain County.
Serving Lorain County for over 100 years, Golden Acres will continue to strive to provide the highest possible degree of health, social interaction and emotional well-being.
While selecting the best place for your loved one is never easy, many families take great comfort in choosing the friendly, home-like environment of Golden Acres. Certified by the Ohio Department of Health as an intermediate care facility, Golden Acres participates in the Medicaid reimbursement program. The facility anticipates certification as a skilled facility. Golden Acres has 82 intermediate care beds, 20 of which are for specialized care of Alzheimer and related dementia patients. Designed by the Golden Acres Gerontologist Consultant, the Alzheimer unit meets the needs of dementia residents who are prone to wandering and not mindful of their safety needs. Small by today's large facility standards, Golden Acres is a full-service, patient-family-oriented facility, operating 24 hours per day, seven days per week, under the guidelines of the Ohio Department of Health. Respite care is also available, ideal for those who are caring for their loved one at home and need a break from the 24-hour vigilance. Golden Acres provides residents a variety of services. As a four-season facility, Golden Acres celebrates each season with attractive decorations throughout the facility. In December, holiday festivities abound. Spring is the time of renewal, and celebrations include the annual Mother's Day tea. In the warm months, Golden Acres residents and their families enjoy congregating outside on the patio or in the gazebo, spending lazy summer afternoons and evenings in the shade. Fall brings hazy days and cool nights, Halloween and Thanksgiving, bonfires and hayrides. A monthly newsletter, Golden Acres Chit Chat, contains entertaining articles and information relevant to all residents and family members, including the monthly activities calendar. Golden Acres also schedules visits from dental, podiatry, optometry, audiology and psychiatric services. Buteon visits weekly and barber visits monthly.
While no facility could take the place of your loved ones at home, our caring staff, residents and their families will strive to make them feel at home and a welcome part of our facility.
Every year in Lorain County, hundreds of children are abused and neglected. Many are removed from their homes for their protection. Judges must decide their futures, but they need information to make these critical decisions. You can provide this information through Voices for Children. Volunteers are men and women from all walks of life with no special or legal background who work alongside attorneys, social workers and other court employees. As an officer of the court, you find out as much as you can about the child. You will review records, interview parents and relatives, foster parents, talk to teachers, neighbors and, most importantly, the child. When the volunteer has a complete profile, he or she appears in court to recommend what is best for the child's future. You've heard the statistics on child abuse. Now is your chance to do something about it. You don't need any special qualifications, only the desire to protect local children who desperately need your help. To become a special advocate or for more information on our next training session, call Voices for Children today.
Hey, buddy, how you doing there? Here, have a treat, okay? No one can deny the loving devotion we get from our dogs, and I think we all agree, we get back more love than we give them. I'm Dick Goddard, I'm reminding you, if you share your love with a dog, you'll never regret it. There is really nothing like a dog to spark up your life, whether you're a youngster, a senior citizen or somewhere in between. And dogs have a whole lot of affection to share. Okay, is that good? You don't have to go far to hear heartwarming adoption stories.
With my husband is like saying man's best friend. He truly loves that dog. He feels it's part human. It's his second daughter, as Erica said. It's definitely a prize. She's queen of the house, basically. She's a good lover, she gives us a lot of attention. She's a good girl.
We had a cat before. We had Abby, and Abby adapted very well. She is best friends with that cat. She will not harm that cat in any way. She's amazing. I love her. When I'm in bed at night, Abby will jump up with me and she will pull the covers back and she will lay under the covers and lay her head on the pillow, just like a human.
I encourage anyone to go to the Lorain County Kennel to adopt a dog. It's given our family great satisfaction and a great reward.
After, you know, a bad day at work or anytime you come home, it's just always nice to kind of turn your mood around once they come, when you come in the door and they wagging their tails and jumping on you, and it's a great feeling to know that they're happy to see you and that they love you just as much as you love them. She is good with our other dog. She's good with people. She likes attention and she likes to cuddle up with you.
It's funny, when Lily, when you kind of discipline her sometimes when she does something bad or she, she always seems to roll on her back and put her paws in the air and just look up at you with a sad look, so it's kind of hard to even, even get mad at her when she does something like that. So we kind of laugh at that.
And it's always amusing when she does get a spurt of energy and want to run around and I was like, oh my gosh, Lily's good to play now.
Yeah, because like, I'm on the couch or whatever and she'll hop down and she always like tries to bite her own tail, and then that kind of like keys on our other dog, Rocky, to chime in and try to, you know, bite her tail a little bit, and then they start playing around a little bit.
One day, we came home with some food from, I just really wanted a burger, so we had a burger and I had it sitting on the tray table by the couch, and I got up for a minute and got a drink, came back and Lily was licking her lips. She had eaten the whole thing, and I was not very happy with her, so I screamed and told Kurt to come down and get her away from me because I was just so upset, but we both lived and I was fine afterwards.
One of the best things about adopting a dog from the kennel, at least for us, was again just giving this dog, who knows what would have happened to her, a new life, and also giving our other dog a companion during the day. It's just fun to have the two dogs and take them for walks and watch them play, and it brought us closer as well.
You know, it just makes you feel better as a person that, you know, you're giving a dog a better chance to live a life.
Actually, I enjoy the exercise because I need to, trying to lose weight, Salem makes me get out of the house every day, and so I have to take him for a walk, even if I don't want to. And he's not that much trouble because he was pretty much housebroken when I got him from the pound. I really like the older pet because Salem was kind of, whoever had him before, they really kind of housebroken, so I didn't really have to go through the potty training deal. I just had to let him out and find a place for him to go. And I think older pets, especially for people who don't have children, are kind of good because Salem, he's real playful, but he's not, he gets tired and he lays down and he doesn't want to be bothered, and that's fine with me. So, he's not always wanting to play, you know, because puppies have a lot of energy. And Salem has quite a bit of energy, but sometimes he just lays on his pillow and he's like, "Don't bother me, I won't bother you." And sometimes when he wants to play, he wants to play, and that's okay. I got Salem at the Lorain County Dog Pound. I found him on the internet, actually. He was, they had his picture on the internet, and so I called and he was still there, and so I immediately went over and looked at him. We went outside and played, and he jumped in the car and wouldn't get out, and there we were. So we rode our way home. So it was love at first sight. He's a very good companion. I can always depend on him to be here and greet me with, you know, open arms when I come in the door. He's very protective of me, and he lets me know when anyone is outside or in the driveway. So I feel safe with Salem, you know, even though he's a small dog, he's, he gives me a safe feeling just in my own home. If I'm having a bad day sometimes and I'm just not in a real good mood, you know, he'll come up and snuggle up to me like, "Hey, Mom, it's okay." I think other people should adopt a pet, and even an older dog. The Lorain County Pound has so many wonderful dogs. All you have to do is go over there and look. I mean, even now, I still go on the website and I tell Salem, "Don't you want a little brother or sister?" Because they all, they have all these little cute dogs over there and they all need good homes. And if you're looking to adopt a pet, I suggest you try the Lorain County Dog Pound first. I mean, you pay for the license and just a nominal fee, and you got a great dog and a great companion and somebody that's going to be in your life for the rest of your life and will love you no matter what.
Hello. My fellow Commissioners and I are here at the Lorain County Dog Kennel on Hadaway Street, just south of Elyria City Discount Value City. We invite you to stop out and see the facility here. We have lots of dogs available for adoption. We also We also encourage all dog owners to register your dog each year and get a dog license. That's your dog's ticket home in case it gets lost. It has a number and can easily be identified so that your dog can be returned to you in case he or she might take a little walk and you are unaware of it.
Along with the regular licensing that the county requires for all dogs, we also have a special dog license. It's a special heart medical care license tag for an additional $5. And the proceeds from that go to help us when we pick up a stray that's injured, hurt, or needs extreme medical care. It helps defer the cost for us. So next time you get your dog license, please pick up the special heart tag.
The Lorain County Commissioners would like to welcome you to come down to the Lorain County Dog Kennel. We also have a website that you can check out. Just click on Dogs to Adopt. There's plenty of dogs to choose from. It's like this little girl right here. This is Sadie. You can come down, make sure it's a good match for you, take the dog out, take it for a walk. But please, if you're thinking about adopting a dog, come out to the Lorain County Dog Kennel and see if there's a match for you.
Give the Lorain County Dog Kennel a call or check their website for photos of currently available dogs. Remember, your best friend is just waiting for you.
In 1787, the Continental Congress organized the lands from the Ohio River to the Mississippi into the Northwest Territories. In 1803, the first of these territories to become a state was Ohio. Ohio was in turn divided into various land grants, including the Connecticut Western Reserve in the northeast corner of the state. The Western Reserve included the area that is today Lorain County. As Ohio gradually increased its counties to the present 88, the land we know as Lorain County went through several changes. Until 1810, the area was split between Geoga and Portage Counties. When the area was being organized into Lorain County in 1822, it was created out of land from Huron, Cuyahoga, and Medina Counties.